I'd like to call the Tuesday meeting first for Education Beating the Order at 6:03 PM. Everybody please rise. My pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John Luther Penner.
Here.
Sheldon Nizer.
Here.
David Pepper.
Here.
Mike Rensworth.
Here.
Bishop Kretsky.
Here.
Paul O'Leary.
Here.
Erin Yobak.
Here.
Okay, the exits are to your right and to your left and to our right behind us. Subject 2.1, may I please get a motion that after review, the Board of Education approves the agenda as presented and/or amended at this meeting? Mike, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. May I please get a motion to accept the minutes of the April 15th special business meeting as presented? Dave, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject 3.2, may I please get a motion to accept the minutes of the April 18th business meeting as presented? Mike, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Section 4.1, statements and presentations. Hand it over to Sarah.
Good evening. At this time, so Mrs. Conley is at the open house for the elementary school tonight. So I told her to stay there, so she was there with the families and the teachers. But we have a student group here with us this evening led by faculty advisor Lori Sanford. I know we have many members of the seniors center here who also work with them. So I'd like to invite them up to the podium to share their work that they've worked on this year.
Hello? Alright, good evening. My name is Lori Sanford. I'm the advisor for the SOA club. And my third graders this year have been very busy making a centennial quilt for the centennial. I have some of my third graders here tonight that they want to read what they wrote and share about the process of making the quilts. So I'm going to turn it over to them. I have Angel Carrick, I have Fiona, I have Sophia, and I have Jackie. And they are going to read to you. And before we do that, I'll show you our beautiful quilt. This is what it looks like.
Beautiful.
It's created this.
If they want to take it off and pass the mic, they can do that.
Okay, yeah, we'll call you. Somebody just help me hold this.
Siwa, this is Siwa. Third grade made a centennial quilt. We each got to choose a quilt square with the image of something from the history of Greenwood Lake. We have been learning about this history of Greenwood Lake like this year in our classes. After choosing the square we wanted, we wanted, we then embroidered our squares using a backstitch. We had to plan out our colors and carefully stitch because some of the images were very detailed. We had help from a wonderful group of volunteers. The volunteers are seniors from the community. Our volunteers including Mrs. Valapone, Mrs. Hooper, Mrs. Dematina, Mrs. Guzzo, and Mrs. Pittiger. Once the square were finished, Mrs. Sanford assembled the quilt on the sewing machine. We also got to try out the sewing machine and were able to make a string bag to take home. We hope you like our quilt. Thank you.
This year, we made a centennial quilt. We each got to pick our own picture. Miss Sanford traced out all of the pictures and we used that as a trace to make it easier for us. We had help from Miss Sanford, Miss Hooper, Miss Dematina, Miss Guzzo, Miss Volpon, and Miss Pittiger. After we did our squares, Miss Sanford put them all together. We made quilt bags and sewed the bags together. We put decorations on our bags.
Alright, so I just want to thank the wonderful volunteers that are sitting over here supporting us tonight because honestly, this was a very, very intricate project and we could not have done it without these wonderful ladies who have donated their time. They have brought me supplies. They have been there every step of the way. So I just have a little thank you with a picture for Mrs. Gunzo, Mrs. Pittiger, Mrs. Valapone, Mrs. Hooper, and Mrs. Dematina, who's down working the poles. Tomorrow night, we are going to the village hall where we are presenting this to the village and we are hoping they are going to hang it there. On a nice rock in village hall, so.
Mrs. Sanford, could they point out to us what pictures they did?
Absolutely. Angel, which picture did you do?
I did this one of the air mail.
Air flight, the mail. Fiona?
I did the Greenwood Lake picture of a sign in Greenwood Lake.
And that's the sign you see when you're coming into Greenwood Lake, right? Sophia?
I did a Greenwood Lake sailboat.
The one right in the middle is hers. And Jackie?
I did the train. The railroad.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Sanford, thank you for planning such a wonderful activity. I know you've done the SOA for several years now, but to tie it into the centennial event really just makes it that much more special. So thank you very much for your time. Great job, students. You guys did amazing. Thank you guys. They do. Can we all go out in the hall?
Oh yeah. Oh, Mrs. Sanford, can we do a group photo with you and with the volunteers in the photo? Or have you already done that with the club?
That's what we're doing.
Okay.
Do you want it in here or?
No, no, if you're doing that, that's fine. And then just then.
Okay.
So for board members, we are beginning to look at the 24-25 school year. Our board meetings currently are Mondays at 6:00 PM. And we are going to be presenting that to you next week for the 24-25 school year that starts in July and runs through June. So we will create a similar schedule for next year. That will be up for equivalent June. We'll still look at Mondays at 6:00 PM. Or anybody else?
Perfect.
Okay. On tonight's agenda, I just want to discuss that there is a final calendar change for the 23-24 school year up on tonight's agenda. We are looking at giving back Monday, the 24th at this point because we have not used another day for an emergency and which would now make Friday, the 21st, the last day of school. It would be a full day of school. Graduation would still be that evening. However, should we need a closure for any reason between now and the end of June, we first try to move to a remote instruction day if that was possible so that it can count as a school day. Or if we are unable to do that, then we would have to add an additional day back on Monday, the 24th. But I know a lot of, I heard a lot of chatter after the last change that we did for parents and they said, you know, we hope we get that Monday too. So we're going to aim to do that for everybody. But again, but just kind of with that caveat that if something were to happen, we would need to go remote that day or get, take back, give back of the 24th. So if that's approved this evening, I would send that out to families tomorrow. Principal reports. So Mrs. Conley sent me her principal report. Thank you, Mr. Gillespie for printing that for me last minute. I had it printed. It's ensuing in my printer in my office. So for Mrs. Conley, again, she is at the elementary school open house this evening, so she sent in her report. She would like to congratulate the students that were here this evening for the sewing club and that worked on the quilt all year. She knows that they really have taken a lot of pride in that and enjoy learning more about the history of Greenwood Lake at the same time. Also, teacher appreciation week was celebrated this month and the staff very much appreciates the generous PTSA who had a week-long theme of goodies and a delicious luncheon last Thursday, recognizing the effort of all staff. So thank you to the PTSA for sponsoring that. This month, they are preparing for next year and hosted the kindergarten and pre-K orientation days for parents and incoming students. They also conducted the DALL4 screenings to assess readiness skills, conform instructional and student needs, and will use this information to invite candidates to our bridging the kindergarten program this summer. I will say that there has been some overall notices from the screeners saying how much different this incoming kindergarten class is, particularly those that were involved in our pre-K class, how much higher their readiness is. So we will be looking at that data once it's filed in, but we did have some informal feedback that they can see a distinct difference. So that's wonderful. Speaking of pre-K, the littlest learners and their parents took a walking field trip through the village of Greenwood Lake to learn about first responders in the community and how they help keep us safe. The fire department comes to the school every October and does a fire safety program. So this trip, they went to the ambulance corps and to the police department. And once they came back from school, they were able to enjoy a picnic lunch in the backyard. Another community group that has helped keep us safe is the local Rotary Club who came into kindergarten classes this week to provide a water safety book, Josh, the baby otter to all students. So thank you to the Rotary Club for meeting with our kindergartners and reminding them about summer safety. And lastly, on May 14th, we had four staff members from the elementary school attend a farm-to-fork conference at Chester Agricultural Center. As you may recall, in February, Mrs. Graff was the recipient of two tower planters to facilitate hands-on learning with students about life cycles and environmental factors that influence plant growth. This conference was a great time to that and provided lessons, materials, and supplies for learning activities related to health and gardening. The staff came in very excited about what they learned and look forward to implementing the lessons with their students. So this is Lauren Graff here, who is the one that got the planter gardens. Mrs. Gove, who is our OT educational therapist. Then we have Mr. Schretnman and Coach Bosfield. Mr. Schretnman is our project lead the way, science hands-on teacher, and Coach Bosfield is our PE teacher. We're also ties in health. So they're looking to work together to create some unit that kind of ties in throughout all of their different areas with students. So it'll be exciting. And for the middle school, we have Mr. Gillespie.
Good evening, everyone. So since our last board meeting, the pets were excited, it didn't stay in place. First of which was on April 24th, we had members of our student government recognize the members of our transportation department and they provided them some breakfast items and some goodies. A photo was sent out there that I wanted to, you know, shout them out for taking the time to do that to recognize our driver monitors and all the work of our transportation department. The photos that we do see on the bottom, the large array are from the Washington DC trip. There were way more photos because there was a lot of things that we did. Three days of active activity, a lot of walking involved, but some great opportunities for students to take in all of the history of Washington DC. Some of the highlights included going to Mount Vernon. We went to the Holocaust museum. They got to go to the National Orioles game. So that's the picture you see of the students wearing the red t-shirts in the stands. And actually, you know, during the game when they do the, you know, make some noise chant, our students were making some noise and they got to be on the big board. So they were super excited about that. And then on our final day, we were able to go and actually tour the White House, which is always available. So that was, that was another special thing that the students were able to see on that trip. Again, filled with a lot of rich history. I kept encouraging the students to take it all in as you go, you know, when you walk through, take the time to kind of read everything. But I know that they certainly enjoyed the trip and certainly a shout out to Mrs. Chapman, who kind of spearheaded and organized that trip. And I would like to thank all of the chaperones who attended that trip. Like I said, it's a very, very long days on that trip. I think the one day we left the hotel and it's like, you know, we're prepared for muscles to roll at 7:30 and then we got back and it was 10 o'clock at night. So we never stopped the whole time. And like I said, everywhere we went involved walking. So we certainly got our steps set. The date, last week, on Thursday, we also had our third quarter celebration for our honor roll, high honor roll, and perfect attendance members. So that's the picture up on the left of, that's our group from the sixth to eighth grade group. So again, congratulations to all those students. I mean, special note to those students too, especially those that have maintained that for three quarters. We'll do another recognition with them that will be coming up in June. But it is no easy task to do that consistently throughout the year. And also for those that just made that for the first time, equally special because it shows that they've been working on it and working to progress. And it's the first time that they've achieved that recognition. So equally special for both groups. The following day, on May 17th, we went to our band and chorus trip. The pictures you see there are the actual performances from the band and chorus. We went to Manchester High School. Both groups did an excellent job in their performances. And you know, there's a lot of schools there. They are repeating the musics in the park. So credit to all of our teachers that prepared our students, certainly Mr. Compton and Mrs. Croll, who wasn't currently there, but did a lot of the prep work ahead of time. And then Mr. Poe, who was in for Mrs. Croll, who was able to kind of kick things up and really do a great job at the time he came in and take charge of that performance. So again, great job by both band and chorus that day. And then they did have some fun at Six Flags going on rides. And if anyone's interested, I went on no rides. That is not my thing. But it was good to see them. Enjoy. Today, actually, we had our Lakers Kids Club who went shopping. Thank you very much for going shopping and providing food to the food pantry. I would also like to send a shout out to the PTSA. I know Mrs. Conley mentioned that. But I would like to thank the PTSA for all the recognition they did last week for our staff. I know it was greatly appreciated, especially the luncheon. So I know that's not an easy task and I wanted them to know that everyone certainly appreciates that gesture and the support from both our staff and students. Tomorrow night is our spring concert. So again, our students will be on stage. We have the 4-5 band and chorus beginning at 5:15 and our sixth to eighth band and chorus concert beginning at 7:15. Just update, next week also is the midway point of the fourth quarter. That means we are in the final stretch. So that is the time too for our students to again, keep the foot on the pedal. And if you need to, if you haven't been doing that, work a little harder to finish out the year on the best note possible. So next Thursday, fireworks reports will be getting up home. And we hope to finish the year on the best foot possible for all our students. The semi-formal dance will take place. That's for seventh and eighth grade students on May 31st. And that is from 6:00 to 8:30 PM here at the middle school. And a lot of the prep work has been put into making that a special fun event for our students. Again, that is for seventh and eighth graders on the 31st. And then on June 3rd, we'll have our third graders come up and visit us here at the middle school to get a little, get eyes on the middle school and just a little tour. Their engineering test students will help out and, you know, just to try to ease the, what's the middle school like, you know? So we want to make sure that that's a nice experience for them. And then our athletic awards for all of our student athletes that competed throughout the year and all the fall, winter, and spring seasons will be on June 5th. And then we have plenty of dates that get in the year. The public goes up at the next one. Alright?
Thank you very much. Don't forget to feed the third graders a snack when they come up here. That's always a big thing. That's all for my superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, everybody. And I know, Mrs. Sanford, we're the only one left in the sewing club, but I'd just like to thank Sanford and the sewing club and the senior services that helped put the quilt together. That's great for the centennial. Thank you very much. Very much appreciate it. And they did a wonderful job.
They did.
Came out great. Budget committee? Hopefully the budget passes tonight. So if you haven't voted, please go out and vote yes. And please vote for the three people running for the Board of Education. Audit committee? Policy committee? I know there's a bunch of policies on here that are to be discussed. Facilities committee? Aaron? I don't remember that last, I don't even know if that was a Friday ago. But the new windows are still on schedule to be delivered and I'm still waiting for the SEP approval. Warwick Valley High School?
Just a couple of date reminders. This Thursday, May 23rd, is the junior formal. Senior prom is June 6th. The seniors scholarship awards are scheduled for May 30th. Check your mail. If your child is up for a scholarship award, you should have received a letter. And the school is asking you to RSVP and return that letter by May 24th for the May 30th award ceremony. Graduation is scheduled for June 29th at 10:00 AM. Emails have been sent out to all parents in case of inclement weather and how the rules change if the weather changes. So check your email code app. And message up to all sprint athletes that are still competing in the playoffs. Thank you.
Chester?
Several items. Congratulations. I apologize, my youth, for not being here. Congratulations coming up. You're obviously at the end of the year.
Thank you. Opsco?
Last meeting was really the last meeting of the year. There is dinner coming on June 5th. Everyone is invited to go. I forgot. All got an email. But basically, there was no presentation for the last meeting. We were just kind of discussing what works for your meetings, what doesn't work for your meetings. I'm very thankful that I am part of this board because in the harshest always, quote unquote, in these other districts, I'm glad that we work as a collaborative unit here and we have a good rapport with our group of attendants because that doesn't seem to be the norm in our town. So I'm thankful. And really go to my highest to realize that we're pretty lucky to be here. It's nice. That's about it. That's it for the, that's our wrap up for this semester.
Thank you. Isma?
I think early in this, we have a walk after coming out.
Anybody here from the PTSA? But thank you again for last week, for the appreciation and that's what's up. Village of Greenwood Lake?
I just want to add for the little league because I'm part of the little league board now. Thanks to Rob Loris because we were unsure we were going to be able to have our picture day outside because of the weather was very iffy. Rob was very accommodating and allowed us to go outside and use the five hour school gym. Jake Olson was very grateful. So those that have your child plus just a big thank you.
Thank you. Correspondence to the board, public statements and petitions? Can go to the floor, anybody? No? Subject 7.1, may I please get a motion to waive the second reading and adopt at first reading the following policy and regulation conditions as presented? Mike? Aaron? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject 8.1, may I please get a motion to approve the financial reports for April 2024 as presented at this meeting? Dave, Ian? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject 8.2, may I please get a motion to approve the fusion housler retainer agreement of the annual financial audit as presented? Michelle? Mike? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject 8.3, may I please get a motion to amend the 2023-2024 student calendar as presented? Mike, Michelle? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Hope everybody's happy. Teachers are happy. They're celebrating. Another day off. Subject?
Well deserved.
Well deserved. Yes, thank you for everything that you guys do obviously. Subject 8.4, may I please get a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement with the village of Greenwood Lake to provide police services as presented? Mike, Aaron? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject 8.5, may I please get a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Warwick for police services as presented? Patty? Dave? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject 8.6, may I please get a motion to approve the SMOA for summer enrichment between the district and the GLTA as presented? Mike? Michelle? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject 8.7, may I please get a motion to approve the health services contract from the Rober Woodbury Central School District as presented? Aaron, Mike? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject 8.4, or wait, 8.8, sorry, go backwards. May I please get a motion to approve the technical services agreement with Westchester Institute for Human Development as presented? Mike? Dave? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject 8.9, may I please get a motion to approve the legal representation agreement between the district, Warwick Valley Central School District, and Shaw Brownson Mail Lambert LP as presented? Mike? Patty? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject 9.1, may I please get a motion to appoint Carolyn Pigeon as principal account clerk as presented? Mike? Aaron? Any discussion? And just so everybody knows, Ms. Pigeon is here in our audience. So thank you for attending, Sarah. Oh, okay. Welcome to our district and thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. It's official now. Now all the fun training begins. Subject 9.2, may I please get a motion to appoint Julia Marcano as full-time custodial worker as presented? Mike? Aaron? No, Ian. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject 9.3, may I please get a motion to execute employment agreements for non-represented staff? Subject nine dot three, may I please get a motion to execute employment agreements for non-represented staff? Mike? Dave? Any discussion? All favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject nine dot four, may I please get a motion to appoint Heather Greenberg as summer school overseer as presented? Mike? Patty? Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Subject ten dot one, may I please get a motion to accept the C P S E, C S E recommendations as presented at this meeting? Mike? Now, Aaron? Any discussion? All favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Subject eleven dot one, may I please get a motion to adjourn to executive sessions for negotiations pursuant to the tail of law in, in the G L T A S R P union employment and history of particular persons. No action will be taken after executive session. Mike? Patty? Any discussion? All favor? Aye, motion passes seven to zero. The next, um, business meeting, uh, board education business meeting will be June twelfth. Thank you, everybody.